Good evening and welcome to the Millbrae City Council Meeting of October 24, 2017. Could we have roll call, please?
All council members are present.
Thank you. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on our agenda is the announcement of the Fire Safety Inspection Contest winners and also the presentation from the Central County Fire Department. We have with us Fire Marshal Roque Abala to present the awards, award winners.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity for us to share this information with you. This particular year, it's actually our second annual home fire safety inspection contest. For many years, we had a poster contest, and the poster contest, we started getting less and less participation. So this was something to bring a lot more life into our program, and we got a lot of opportunity to really send home and work with, have the children work with their parents and work with their families on the annual home fire safety inspection contest. And what happens is, things are introduced to the children in the Millbrae School District about how to do a home inspection. They take the home inspection home, they work with their parents, and then they bring it back. And from that, they're given raffle prizes, and those raffle prizes eventually lead to a winner in every grade. Tonight, what we wanted to do was present specifically to the grand prize winner, and this year is Jaclyn Wu of Spring Valley School. She's our grand prize winner. And she is the winner, but unfortunately, her principal contacted us this afternoon to tell us she was sick and will be unable to receive it. But what we do is, I said that there's a winner in every grade, and those winners are presented with, or recognized at their school during their school presentation. And what we'll do is, we'll be sure to recognize Jaclyn Wu as our grand prize winner. The NFPA program this year is "Every Second Counts," planned two ways out. And it's really important that we recognize how planning for evacuation, especially with recent news of what's happening and what's occurred, that everybody should plan two ways out, out of their home, and be prepared for any type of disaster, especially fire, as we recognize, fire prevention. Thank you very much for this opportunity, and we'll be sure to extend well wishes, if I may, on behalf of the Millbrae City Council to Jaclyn Wu as well.
And we also have our Fire Chief from Central County Fire, John Cammire, here to give the annual report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Thank you for having us tonight. I think you know Deputy Chief Flinders is also with us tonight. Wanted to introduce him. So tonight, really wanted to actually first figure out how to do the PowerPoint, get that going? Okay, nope. So tonight, the four primary areas that I want to discuss are, kind of go over where we are with our budget for this fiscal year, talk about our operations. It's been a busy year with sending folks all over the state, the wildland fires, and actually across the country at the hurricanes. So we'll talk a little bit about that. We'll talk about fire prevention and the work that they're doing in town, and some of the enhancements that we've had over the last year. And then finally, kind of going over, with all the excitement is in administration, that's a joke, but how the administration is really the backbone of our organization, which supports not only operations and prevention, but also our community risk programs as well. All right, find the right button. Okay, so first off, with our budget, sort of at the 10,000-foot level, the good news with our budget, we actually went down by 2%. The first decrease that we've had in, that I can remember. So that's actually really good news. The decrease in the budget was primarily driven by some of the work we've done around workers' comp, and we had a new actuarial done, and the new actuarial reported back to our reserves significantly decreased over previous years, and the reason being is that we've closed some old cases, we've had some key retirements that had some injuries. So it's really driven our workers' comp reserves numbers down, and that was the big mover for us, and helped them make those adjustments in our budget, and that's including some of the capital costs and positions that we have put into this year's budget. So specific to Millbrae, so Millbrae actually had a 2% increase, and so the devil, as you know, is in the details, but it's actually good news, and the reason being is, with the workers' comp actuarial reserves going down significantly, it allowed us to bring Millbrae in a year earlier, which gives Millbrae a lower year-over-year cost for the workers' comp payments, but also paying into a decreased reserve. So even though the Millbrae is going up 2%, it's actually kind of getting us ahead of the game and actually coming in at a far less number than it would be had it been two years ago even. So that's actually some really good news, even though it doesn't, on paper, doesn't really look like that, but it's, our workers' comp is moving in a really good direction, we're managing it better, we're getting things treated, and we're closing out some of the older cases, which are hopefully going to keep trending down. So moving into operations, as I was saying earlier, it's been a busy, really busy year. I don't know that we've had as much response across the state than we've had this year. We've had four different wildland fires that we've responded to. One of those was, we sent two engines, and the most recent one, up in the Napa and Sonoma areas, we had three engines out, which is pretty extraordinary for us, because not only do we have to send out those three engines, but we have to make sure that back at home, those same three engines get filled with folks that are here in town. But we obviously felt strongly that we wanted to provide all the support we could up there. We actually had a personal effect on this. One of our battalion chief's sister lost her home, and another one of our captain's sister lost her home as well. We had two different members of our department who had to get evacuated from their homes. Didn't lose their homes, but certainly scary situation for their family. And actually, Chief Flinders and I drove up on, I think it was that Wednesday night after the fire started, to visit our crews, and they were sleeping on the ground in tents and under some pretty tough conditions, but they're working pretty hard up there. But they were in good spirits, understood what their mission was, and we were really proud to have them up there doing all they could to provide that support. Additionally, we responded to not only the Houston hurricane, but also Florida as well. We have about 23 members of our department that are on the FEMA Task Force Urban Search and Rescue Team, and we sent eight to Florida, we sent one to Houston, and that was to provide support in the aftermath of those hurricanes. And so it's been a real busy, about eight weeks or so, because we've had a lot of people out, but that's our mission, and that's what we do. It's just been, it's been busy, and so, and busy is, keeps us on our toes. As we look at hiring, we have four new firefighters this year, which is, which is pretty big for us. Two of them are currently in the academy, you might see them marching around during the day over here next door. They've been busy doing that, they're due to graduate at the end of November, so they will come onboard, and then likely in the spring, we will have four more that'll be going through the academy and coming onboard probably midsummer of next year. So a lot going on for us with succession and retirements, so it's definitely keeping our hiring committee and everybody busy. Our new apparatus, I know you've seen our new apparatus here just across the street here, but we have four of our frontline fire engines are brand-new, of the six that we have, and over the next four years, we'll replace the other two and also our truck company. So we have a lot of apparatus capital costs coming up, which we are planning for in the budget, which I will kind of touch on just a little bit here in a little bit. So operations, those are some of the highlights for us. One of the things that we really wanted to keep track of with the development that's going on in Millbrae and also in Burlingame as well, is that we're tracking the call volume, because that's what's going to really drive us to consider, are we meeting our service levels, and do we need to consider adding more additional resources? And as you can see, over the last six quarters, we haven't seen a precipitous increase. It's trending about where we would normally see that. So what we're planning on doing, as the development increases and we see people start to move into those buildings, to track that call volume, to see if, is there a need for those increases? Right now, I would say no, but we're still kind of into it, and I know that you've certainly seen a lot of development come across your desk as well, and so we will keep track of that and make sure that we add resources as needed. Okay, fire prevention. In our fire prevention, represented by our Fire Marshal, Roque Abala, here today, he's worked hard to make sure that we're meeting the demands of our citizens, because we've had, as we talked about, a lot of development, and that's really falls on the prevention staff to make sure that all the buildings that are going in are equipped and that are safe for our communities. Not only that, one of the bigger enhancements we've had this year was that our Prevention Division stepped up from doing new business inspections, really on primarily restaurants, to all new business now are getting new business inspections, so we know what's coming in and if they're fire-safe. And that was really, that was really key for us, and I give a lot of credit to our Fire Marshal for taking that on, because as we know, you know, business has changed quite a bit, and we want to make sure that our residents are safe, our business owners are safe, and so I credit him for taking that on. We hired a half-time fire prevention specialist as well for this fiscal year, due to the increased demands, not only in development, but in the inspection program, and we were really finding that our prevention folks were really getting tapped on their workload, so we're hoping this half-time person is really alleviates that workload, and we will keep monitoring that as we go, in case we need to make that a full-time position as well in the future. One of the other key things that we did is, we increased our ISO rating from a 3 to a 2, and that's significant, because that is where it directly impacts the residents. That actually decreases their insurance rates. The way that we were able to do that is by having, Millbrae now is part of CCFD, we were able to include our training and our equipment, and also our community risk reduction programs into that, and that's how ISO looks at the scoring, and that's how we brought it from a 3 to a 2. So that's actually pretty, pretty significant, and again, I give a lot of credit to the Fire Marshal on that, because he spearheaded that and got that done when that, when that came out for us. And then we did our annual CERT class. We have another one coming up just after the first of the year. That's one of, you know, cornerstones of our fire prevention in our Preparation Division, is to provide those CERT courses in our communities, and Millbrae has a very robust, as we saw, the man of the year, Dino, who is on point with that. He is an invaluable resource, and I can't say enough about how deserving he is for that, that award, but year in and year out, it's not just this year, he's the man of the year, he's always the man of the year for us in that program, so a lot of credit to him, and hopefully he's at home watching on TV. So moving on, administration, as I said, that's where all the excitement happens. This is our new org chart, and we've added a couple new positions. One is in our administrative staff. So again, we have a lot of increased workload, not only with prevention, not only with operations, but sort of across the board for us, and we also have some succession challenges, so we're trying to make sure that we stay ahead of those and don't get caught behind, especially now as it's busy with the economy doing as well as it is. So we increased our staff by one in administration and by a half in prevention, and again, we will continue to make sure that we're meeting the challenges and staff accordingly. Those are really the highlights for us in administration. Succession is just going to be a real big challenge for us. We have some key retirements in a lot of our upper management positions, and so we're going to make sure that we work on that. Some of the things that we're looking for, for the future are, we know, just like all the cities and us as well, we're going to be facing with increased purse costs, so we know that's coming. We are trying to plan accordingly to make sure that we are allocating funds for that to anticipate those challenges, and as I had mentioned earlier, we have some new apparatus that are coming in the next three to four years. So we have an apparatus replacement fund, which we're trying to allocate funds to, so we don't have significant spikes in capital cost year-over-year. That's apparatus and equipment, so those are going to be some of the biggest challenges for us. And then, again, workers' comp is always a challenge for us. We're on a good trend right now with it, with our reserves where they are, really, really happy where that number came out. It's going to allow us a little bit of room to stay good on our budget, but it's also going to keep us motivated to stay on workers' comp, make sure people are getting treated, getting back to work, and when they get injured, that they're well taken care of, and that's been a big success for us. So that's the highlights for us. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and I just want to say thank you for giving us all your support quite a bit throughout the year, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief. Councilman Lee?
Can you tell the audience what ISO stands for?
Insurance Services Office.
Okay, thank you, and thank you guys for your service. When my father went to the hospital, you guys were really on top of it. And so I have a question about, can you tell us a little bit about what, what's going on with the fire station over here? And I know, but I don't think the audience knows to full extent how important this station is to the fire services. And also, can you talk about, somebody approached me and said that the, would you guys be open to doing, taking over the ambulance services? What would that, you know, what would that look like? I mean, you can't answer right now, because you don't have any numbers ahead of you, but would you guys be open to that?
Some overview, I can give you some overview on that. So the first question is about Station 37. That is actually one of our key stations right now. That is where we put all probationary firefighters when they start out. 37 is one of the busiest engines in the county, so they get call volume, they get interaction with the community, they're obviously right next door to not only the police department, but to City Hall, so there's a lot of exposure there. It's also the key hub for our Training Division, and so, an important thing about our Training Division, it's not just for CCFD, it's for every fire department from San Bruno to Belmont. So that's why you'll see a Belmont fire engine, a San Mateo foster city, and that's where they're hubbed out of. They don't do all of their training there, but a key part of it, and we have a nice state-of-the-art classroom there, and we are currently running our Fire Academy out of there, so that Fire Academy includes all new firefighters across the entire county. So it's busy, it's busy over there. I'm sure there are some, you know, challenges with noise, because they can be loud over there, but, but we do really, really appreciate it and highly value that space, because it's unique for CCFD, certainly. And then, to the second question, the, every 10 years, the county renews the transport contract for the provider. Right now, the provider is American Medical Response. So there is a certain planning cycle that happens about two years out from that contract. In our county, we have what's called the JPA ALS Committee, and I know Council Member Papen sits on that, and she is one of, I believe it's 18 members on that, of elected officials that sit on that, and sort of dictate where we go with that. So, you know, as to the question of, would we entertain transport, I think it's sort of a broader question, that it would actually be probably your question before it got to be my question. I think that that's really going to get driven, driven by our elected officials and how they see appropriate, but there is that Committee of 18, which would need to vote on that, and we're technically contractors to that system, so we would have to participate in the process of the RFP that the county will put out. I don't really know what the timelines are, they haven't really publicly established those timelines. Of course, in the fire service, we are always looking in ways to enhance our services and do whatever we can to do a better job. We have an excellent relationship with American Medical Response as our transport provider, so I would say working relationship, we are fine. But I think that, to answer your question, I would say I would defer it back to that committee, would probably be above my level to make those. I mean, I could give you my opinion, of course, we want to increase services, but I think there's a lot more definitive look on, on the numbers than the dollars and the commitment and liability that goes along with that, but that's a great question.
Mr. Vice Mayor Papen?
Thank you all for your wonderful service and helping out. I was just up in the Napa area, as was Councilmember Lee, and it was really vital that everybody supports, so we really appreciate all the hard work your team did, and...
That's a long, thank you.
Yes, please. And as far as the council member's question regarding that, Brian Dickerson, I'm supposed to get back to him on, it's really coming down to, you know, the finance, financially it'll work out for the benefit of all the cities, and we hope the staff will be working with us on that, but there have been some numbers we think need to be kind of updated, and so we can see where it's all going, but we look forward to working with you all on that as well.
Absolutely.
So I thank you for that, and really so much for all of your hard work and efforts.
Absolutely, thank you.
Councilman Shatter?
I too. Thank you to, to all staff, both everybody that went up and down here. Quick question, we've been trying to get more people to sign up for SMC Alert, especially given that most people don't have landlines anymore. Have we seen through the fires an uptick of people signing up for SMC Alert, or what else do we need to do to encourage our residents and our businesses to sign up?
So that, that is something that we are working on. We pretty consistently post it on our social media to get people to urge them to do that. We do that in our CERT classes, we, I know that we have, I think, next month, you know, some plans to kind of get in front of the public and let them know what our services are, and that's one of the primary things, and I think what we saw was, as we saw out of those fires, the more people that do sign up for that are going to get the information. And if you're, if you're on that, you know you get a lot of stuff, whether it's a, you know, a traffic issue where traffic is stopped, or, you know, a mountain lion roaming the hills, there's, there's a lot of stuff that comes out, but it's, in a situation like that, it's, it's going to be invaluable to be on that system.
And just for the people watching at home, there are certain systems, alert systems, that work when you have a landline, but most people have gotten rid of those. If you have a cellphone, you need to take that extra step to sign up for it. It's really easy, it's smcialert.org.
I'm going to look at our Fire Marshal, because he's the one that would know, I believe, so...
And, and you can sign up for how you want to be notified, if you want a text message, if you want an email. I would strongly encourage you, as our first line of support, first line in any type of activity, is please, sign up. You can sign up for different regions, if your parents live in a different area, you can sign up for that city. I happen to sign up for San Mateo Countywide and Santa Clara wide, because I have a house down there, so I want to know what's going on. So please take that a minute to go to smcialert.org and sign up. Thank you, and thank you.
And if people need to know where to get access to that, they can call our offices, 558-7600, and we can direct them to that website, they can go to our Twitter feed as well, we post that pretty consistently.
Thank you. Councilman Aliva?
I want to say, I don't want to say a quick thank you, I want to say a big thank you for everything, and a beautiful report with your plate being so full. Based upon the cellphone usage in the, in the horrific fires up in Napa, my mom was up there as well, too. She was evacuated, 80 years old, and she had her cellphone, and she was on the alert system but had no charger. So just a little quick notice to that, to know how to charge it in the phone, or make sure you have some sort of apparatus to keep that going. But based on that, looking in the future, it's getting to be that time of the year again, and the holidays are coming, are you going to be doing any fundraisers that we might be able to start? I know that... I know that the collection, everybody wants to collect for the fires, but is there something we can get out and start collecting for you for the holiday season?
Yeah. Thank you for bringing that up. So, we'll be doing two different things. One is, we will be doing a toy drive and I think we're going to look at, is there any way for us to facilitate any help up in that affected area? And then also, we are, we had a lot of people reach out to us as the fires were still going on to see what we could do actually. Chief Lenders actually rallied up a lot of donations really early on when we drove up there and we actually went to a shelter and dropped those off so they were in dire need. But we were getting sort of inundated with, hey, I'd like to bring something. And we were kind of becoming a clearinghouse for that. So, what we kind of decided is that we wanted to take a sort of a long-term approach to this because they're going to be impacted for, you know, years likely. So, we want to be here for them and provide the support. So, we are, right now, staff is looking at ways for us to do a fundraiser here in the next four to six weeks and think of ways as we get closer to the holidays to maybe make a bigger impact for them. We will certainly let you know, we don't have a fully fleshed out plan yet, but we're going to be working with the city manager to see what we can do here in Millbrae and we will certainly keep you posted on that. Because we kind of felt like we wanted to be there ongoing, not just in the moment, because this is going to be an ongoing thing for them, like I said, years. So, and one thing that I really want to echo, I think is important, is that this is really about people helping people. And with the SMC Alert and with CERT, however it is in a disaster like that, I look at the fire up there as like a, you know, 8.0 earthquake. It's that kind of devastation to that one little area. And we are looking internally as staff to see what we can do certainly to improve our wildland urban interface areas. But we also want to make sure people are prepared, that they can get out, that they have escape plans, that they have an ability to know if their neighbor is an elderly person who might need help. And we were just chatting with the fire marshal because he was up there working in the EOC and a lot of the problems that we had were just elderly people getting out of those areas or in their garages and not able to release their openers. So, things like that. So, we're kind of looking internally as staff to see how can we get the message out and also certainly the preparation and defensible space in our areas. We're looking at that right now, so we have more for that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, okay.
Oh, just quickly, while you're saying you're trying to reach out to the community, just remember that 50% of our population is Asian. Thank you.
Well, I will credit with our fire marshal, too. We've done a lot of work with our business owners, too, that are primarily Chinese-speaking and reading. And almost all of our documents that we interact with the business owners are translated into Chinese as well. So, we are definitely aware of that. And again, credit to the fire marshal because he's been doing a good job with that. That's a good point.
And I just wanted to point out one thing, too, that was mentioned on the emergency services here. If we are ever put in a similar situation, whether it's an earthquake or whatever, it's vitally important that people try to change your message on your cellphone if you're going to go, if you're safe and where you've headed to. Because although the cellphone networks might not be working, your loved ones are going to be calling constantly, tying up more of the lines. So, if you change your message to say, you know, whether you're safe or not and where you went, it's really important and it'll kind of reduce the stress level.
Yeah. Thank you. Excellent.
And if I may, I think this has been a fabulous report. Thank you to all three of you for being here this evening and thank you for everything you've done to represent our community and represent it well. But I don't want to forget to say thank you to the sheriff's office, who likewise is represented tonight, does not have a presentation, but did as well send manpower and equipment up to the recent fire devastation north of us. So, thank you, Chief.
Thank you. And thank you for the report. And I know having 13 officers and a battalion chief all gone at once, that's a pretty big strain for a relatively small department. But, you know, fortunately, everyone was able to really rally together, you know, support the folks that are up there in the North Bay and also in the floods down south as well. So, thank you again. And I think maybe this is another good opportunity to plug CERT, which will begin, I believe, again in January, I think Wednesday or Thursday evenings in January and February. So, a good opportunity to learn about emergency preparedness and to be ready in case the next disaster strikes close to home. So, thank you again and look forward to seeing you more in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Next, we have the agenda overview and we have the city manager, Marshal Rins, to provide that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to tell you a few things that are going on in our community as we get ready to meet this evening. First, Public Works has provided an update that indicates the 2017 smoke testing project started last week in the Hillcrest Basin, along Hillcrest and La Prenda. Park Boulevard paving work has been begun. Some liquid amber trees were removed because they had caused extensive damage to the pavement and the sidewalk. These trees will be replaced with new trident maple trees. In the very near future, paving work continues on hazel, laurel, and ashton. In regards to the Hillcrest storm drain improvements, the project is winding down. All the pipes are in the ground and the contractor will be clearing the job site very soon. In terms of the sanitary sewer project for 2017, the crews continue to work on the sanitary sewer CIP this week in the vicinity of Santa Teresa Way and Park Boulevard. In addition, we have completed the City Hall landscaping project. You see it as you approach this evening with new drought tolerant landscape that will reduce our water use and make water, more water available for other uses throughout the city. I've mentioned these projects because these are all part of the council's strategic goals to increase the volume and the pace with which we complete and engage in CIP projects. So, moving to the detail of your agenda this evening, first, you have reported bills and claims since your last meeting, followed by city attorney report out from your closed session of October 10th. And we are represented this evening by city attorney Michael Conneran. We have public communications. We have consent calendar. And in consent, we have three items proposed. First would be the council considering canceling the regularly scheduled city council meeting of December 26th. This has been the same operation, same plan that you've followed for many years at this point. Next item, you have considering approval of a special event permit for the Millbrae Lions Monster March event, which is on the 28th of this month. They propose to close the street Broadway from Meadow Glen to La Cruz from 1:00 to 1:30 in the afternoon. The final item in consent would be to authorize the city manager to execute a contract change order with quality pipe services incorporated in excess of the 10% of total project cost, normally authorized without council approval. So, we've put this on the agenda for your consideration and this is in regard to the 2017 sanitary sewer CCTV inspection project. Following consent calendar, you have a public hearing item where we noticed in an ordinance amendment, amending the municipal code that would limit recreational medical and commercial cannabis use and other activities pending further evaluation and the completion of studies and impacts that would be associated with such activities. And we're recommending that tonight you waive your first reading and introduce the ordinance that's included in your packet. Finally, on existing business, tonight you have confirmation of the 2017-18 mayor vice mayor rotation. We did submit a report with the agenda last Friday that incorrectly listed only the absentee votes. We did today issue a revised report. The revised report has been distributed to the council members as well as posted on our website. The vote totals that are reflected in that report come directly from the secretary of state and the secretary of state's website. Following existing business, you have no new business tonight. You have council comments and then we recommend that you adjourn to your next session. I'll take any questions that you have.
Vice Mayor Pappan?
Item nine was informational at the last session. Can I ask why it's now action?
Predominantly because of the motion and action that was taken by the council forwarding it to tonight. I don't have the exact wording in front of me. Do...
It's also the council protocols sort of mandate that. If you read the council protocols, they say if it's pulled off consent, then it comes back at the next meeting for action. Doesn't say why. So, that's tracking what the council protocol says. That's all.
We did, based on questions this evening, or this afternoon, talked to the city attorney's office about the options that the council has this evening. We did have a request to put it on consent and that was not an option, given that the agenda had been published as you have it in front of you. When you, as a council, entertain this item, you do have the flexibility to move the item to consent, is my understanding.
Or they could now as part of the agenda.
Or, that's correct. Now as part of the agenda overview. Move it to consent if that is the desire of a majority of the council.
I'm just unclear on why, I mean, if we move it to consent, does it become informational again? Or that's where I'm...
I think if you put it on consent, it would confirm the mayor and vice mayor as outlined.
The actual would be the same. The receipt of the report. If I look on the revised report...
Into the microphone, please.
If you look at the revised report, it's basically, the action is to accept the report.
Ah, so you're just accepting the report?
Yes.
Did you have a comment? Okay. Next, we have a report from closed session and we have the city attorney, Michael Conneran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council met in closed session on October 10th and there was no reportable action taken at that time.
Next item on the agenda is public communication. This is the opportunity for any member of the public to speak on any item that is not on this evening's agenda. Speakers have up to three minutes. You may begin when the green light's on and when the yellow light is on, you have 30 seconds left. And when the red light comes on, your time has expired. The first speaker tonight is Win Gersich.
Hi, my name is Win Gersich and I'm going to talk first about geoengineering, the weather. We had these fires, but do you know that our government can actually control the weather and they can seed the clouds and make it rain? But they didn't do that when they had those fires up in Napa, did they? And then, a few days ago, what was it, Thursday or Friday night, it was raining after they sprayed the heck out of the sky with this chemtrails. If you look this up, Pilots, Doctors, and Scientists Tell the Truth About Chemtrails. That's on YouTube. Once again, it's Pilots, Doctors, and Scientists Tell the Truth About Chemtrails. And you can also look up Geoengineering with Dane Wiggington. And this is another one. April 2014, breaking news, weather weapons have existed over 15 years. They've been seeding the clouds since the Vietnam War and they made that war fought with torrential rain. So, we can cause, if we want to put out a fire, we can make it rain. And they didn't do that. But most of all, I'm going to talk about breast cancer. Jackie Spears wrote a bill in 1995 when old Bush Senior got us in the New World Order with the UN. And she wrote a bill to Florida, ate the rest of California. Well, if you look this up, this documentary is so damning, it would put her in jail. And I really think that everybody should check it out because this tells you exactly what fluorosilic acid is, how Cargill had this huge amount of this stuff, how it actually ate a hole through the ground in Florida, and now we purchase this stuff from China? This stuff is so poisonous. When you watch this documentary, I think you should have a town hall meeting and get her down here and ask her, how does it prevent cavities when it pits kids' teeth? And it actually causes dental fluorosis and all kinds of awful stuff, and especially cancer. But if you look this up, it's YouTube, 2017 banded documentary, The Truth About Water Exposed, in full. This is a complete documentary with Paul Connet from Fluoride Action Network. It has Mike Adams from NaturalNews.com. They talk about many scientists, but they actually show fluorosilic acid and they show the pit that they had in Florida where Cargill had this. And remember how Cargill, when they sold their marshlands and they were overpriced and they got millions of dollars extra when someone assessed the land around the bay? And nobody got the money back from them, did they? But when they show how corrupt Cargill is, it's on this documentary. You've got to see it. But there's a man, too, there. His name is Pittman. And at 20 years old, he worked at the Cargill phosphate fertilizer industry and he was poisoned from it. And they said that the women who were secretaries there, that this stuff just being in the air ate their nylons off their legs. And it pitted their cars, it pitted their clothes. And this stuff is so poison, can you imagine what it did to their lungs? But he wrote a book about phosphate fertilizer, Toxic Tort by Pittman, and this is on this documentary. And I really hope that every one of you check this out. And then I think you should be calling Jackie Spears' office and I think she should be voted out of office. Because when you see this, this is proof positive that this stuff doesn't belong in your water. And there's no way she should have written that bill, especially nine years after the federal studies were done, knowing that it increases cancer death rates. And Dr. Dean Burke did the federal studies at Batell Memorial Institute with John Yomuyanis. And that's on YouTube, too. And he said it amounts to legalized murder. This documentary will prove it. So, please look up 2017 documentary, The Truth About Water Exposed. Thanks.
Okay. Seeing no other speaker slips, the next item on the agenda will be the consent calendar. And we have three items on consent, items five, six, and seven. We have a question from Councilman Schneider.
I'm the co-chair of Monster March. Does that mean I should not vote or is that okay to vote for that? I mean, there's no monetary, there's just work involved, but I want to make sure. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Pappan and a second from Councilwoman Aliva. Your votes, please.
Consent calendar, items five, six, and seven passed unanimously.
Moving on to item number eight, this is the ordinance amending the Chapter 5120 of the municipal code, limiting recreational, medical, and commercial cannabis use. And we have with us, pending further evaluation and completion of studies, we have with us our community development director, Tanya Ward, to provide a report.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. So, in late July, the city council received an informational presentation from staff and from consultants, Muni Services, that identified a number of policy questions that have risen from the passing of Prop 64 that took place almost a year ago. It was mentioned that this measure legalizes cannabis for adults over the age of 21 and authorizes commercial cultivation and sale of cannabis for non-medical use. In each case, the law allows for cities to determine whether and what type of uses in these cannabis activities should be allowed within its jurisdiction. And what's important is the timing of these discussions is important because staff expects that the state will start issuing licenses for commercial medical and non-medical cannabis as of January 1st of 2018, if cities do not implement a local program by the end of the year. As part of tonight's discussion, this report includes a projected estimated revenue summary by Muni Services that suggests a potential of up to $30,000 for delivery only and up to $135,000 for one dispensary on an annual basis. However, what's not entirely clear is that this particular time, that the cost and the benefits of permitting and regulating those activities are established. So, as such, staff is recommending an ordinance that's in your packet, one that's similar to ones already in place for medical dispensaries that would ban cannabis-related businesses and activities, subject to further analysis and review. This ban would allow flexibility for the council to reconsider restrictions and to impose limitations whenever it chooses and without risk of giving up authority to the state. So, with that, staff recommends opening the public hearing, taking public testimony, and introducing the ordinance that's attached. And the team is here to answer any questions that may be asked. Thank you.
Okay. So, we have a motion to open the public hearing from Vice Mayor Pappan and a second from Councilman Lee. Your votes, please. Public hearing is now, do you have to read the vote count for that? Okay.
Oh, okay. The public hearing is now open.
We do have one speaker slip, but shall we, maybe you'd have a report on the ordinance or a report maybe from Muni Services first, or would the council like to begin?
Um...
Let's have the report from staff and from Muni Services if available. Let's have the report from staff and from Muni Services available.
Good evening. Fran Menci with Muni Services, and Larry Bergkamp. I think, you know, we presented a public conversation the last time we were together. We just have some revenue estimates we can share with you right now. Larry.
Well, the information that was provided in your information as regard to the revenue, the one thing we want to point out is that the information on the consumption of cannabis is not real clear at this point. We've looked at a lot of research to try to identify consumption in different areas, and estimates on sales information. We've pulled some information out of the various different states, Colorado to Washington, to identify like average sales and those type of things. But at this point, because the black market is so prevalent, and the industry for so long has been underground, there's not a lot of good information. One thing that will start in January, as a state regulates and starts collecting the excise taxes on those, on the businesses in the state, we expect to see a lot better information coming out to provide better information on potential revenues. And also, the economy is also changing. Yesterday, we heard, just based on the fires that have happened in Northern California, have drastically impacted some of the cannabis operations in those areas, and could impact the price and the sales and the availability of certain cannabis. So all those things go into establishing, or trying to identify revenues or potential revenues. So our ranges are generally conservative at this point, until more information is available, and providing ranges to identify those various different incidences that impact the industry soon.
Okay. Vice Mayor Pappen?
Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. No, no, wait. Yeah, nice try there. So by the ordinance proposed here, I mean, our concern is we don't know enough at this point in time. And getting something on the books, this ban pending other research. My understanding is, when the state begins to collect these taxes and all of that, whether we sell anything here or not, if we do this ordinance, we would be able to, like, keep the door open a tiny crack, so that we could potentially access some of the grant money to help build our recreation center, or anything benefiting the city of Millbrae. So ban pending, as this is written, would keep that door open just enough so that the city of Millbrae could benefit from something like that.
Correct. The ban at this point is because of the requirements for, between medicinal and the recreational, the requirements are different. So unless you provide, prohibit the recreational activities, specifically in the city, the state will not be able to issue permits to a permit holder unless the city actually prohibits it. And at this point...
Isn't that what we're doing here?
That's what you're doing, yeah. So that would leave the door open. So that would basically limit the state from issuing permits until you've determined what you desire within the city.
What our desire is. Okay, I'm not...
This may be the time to let you know that you have another resource in the room. Adam Hoffman is in the front row here with Hanson Bridget, with your legal firm. Adam? I mean, I'm fine with these two giving legal advice, but I'd feel better if you're giving legal advice.
Yeah, because I'm going to hold you to this.
I anticipate that. No, clearly, these are the lawyers. No, I would have jumped up if what they were saying was incorrect, and what they said is exactly right. This ordinance is about preserving the city's discretion moving forward. There isn't time at this stage to adopt a meaningful regulatory scheme at the local level before the state starts issuing licenses. And so this ordinance sets a placeholder, allows the city to conduct the analysis that's necessary, develop whatever sets of regulations it chooses to, and then implement them whenever it's ready to do so. And that can be done, from a legal standpoint, pretty much at any time.
But where would this put us? I mean, we're not trying to open the door to this. Our public has been very strong in their representation, that they don't want it here. But, you know, safety-wise, if we get something on the books, it's extremely restrictive. I'm looking at one from Palm Desert here. Basically, you know, the section's been prepared in accordance with the Compassionate Use Act of 1996, the Medical Cannabis Program Act, the Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act. I mean, there's all these different things that somebody even attempting to get a license in any city would have to deal with. Is that correct? Because we've banned medical marijuana already. So if we view this in the future, and that would seem redundant, that you wouldn't give it to individuals, or allow individuals who have medical needs to access it somewhere.
Well, to be clear, the medical cannabis ban in Millbrae has to do with dispensaries. It's not so much, you know, a person who has a prescription who possesses cannabis in their home.
Yeah, I mean, they're getting it in the mail.
I couldn't speak...
There's nothing that we can, well, from what I've heard...
Right, or they go to San Francisco.
The police officer's delivering it.
Right, okay.
Or somebody is. Maybe it's not the police.
That would surprise me, given the federal government would frown on that.
I'll just say, I witnessed some such deliver, not, I don't know where it came from, but they said they got it in the mail in Marin County, not here. Somebody with a medical card. But, so I'm curious as to, I lost my train of thought. Sorry about that. And I've had none of that stuff. I just want to be clear. But I just, I'm concerned, as you can tell, by, you know, Millbrae not being able to access some of those funds in the future. We don't want to open the door here. Some of this regulation that I've read here is limited to like two blocks in one city. I mean, we can be exceptionally restrictive if we choose to further investigate this. So, these guys down here. We're hoping to get more information. But that was my primary concern. So you are assuring me as legal counsel here, Millbrae will not be foreclosed from obtaining some of the funds from the state.
I can't speak to how the state is going to administer the revenue that it receives from the excise tax that it is imposing. That's a separate issue.
These gentlemen have any better information on that?
Yes, the issue is, if the city decides to fully prohibit any cannabis activities, eventually, the city will not be able to access the granting, the grant money. At this point, we haven't seen the final regulations out of the state yet of how it's all going to be determined. But initially, the funds that the state will be collecting go through various different categories, repay all the state agencies first, and then they've got a number of different categories of allocations for that money. And then, all the way at the bottom is where cities can obtain grants for various different activities if they've allowed some type of cannabis operations within the city.
Now, I'm confused.
Can I jump back in? Go ahead. So I think the critical piece here, one, is that this is still a moving target, in terms of how these monies are going to be administered by the state. And two, I don't think, and these gentlemen could correct me, I don't think there's any reason to believe that by virtue of having a ban in place on any particular date in 2018, that those monies that are continuing to be collected on into the future would be made permanently unavailable if the city of Millbrae ultimately decided to open its doors to these kinds of businesses. So say, for example, you've got a ban in place until July 1st of 2018.
Well, this doesn't have a date on it, does it?
No, I agree. But as of July 1st, 2018, you could hypothetically adopt new ordinances that permit some series of activities. If that was done, and if the state was administering money in a way that reflected the limits, or lack of limits at the local level, you could become eligible, again, depending on what the state decides to do. But there's no reason to believe that having this ordinance now will forever foreclose you receiving funds from the state.
Does it benefit us, then, as this ordinance is written, to put a specific date in it, say, the first quarter of 2018, to readdress this issue?
From my perspective, it doesn't add anything. The city can revisit this at any time, can ask for feedback from staff at any time. You could revisit it at the very next meeting, if that's what you chose to do.
From what I understand, we can't do that. This has to be a reading, a second reading, in 30 days to...
I'm sorry, you're absolutely right. I was exaggerating. But my point being, there is no...
Lawyers should not exaggerate.
There is no, there is no lower limit in terms of when the city can begin to work on this. And so you can impose a date to sunset it. The risk, then, is that if the city, for whatever series of reasons, isn't ready on that date, that you then have to kick the can further down the road, or risk having the state come in and take control.
So, the way it's written now, if we establish some sort of a subcommittee to investigate the aspects of this, and look at other ordinances, we would be more educated as we proceed, so that maybe we can not be stuck at the bottom of the pile, and we can safely ensure our public safety. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Aliva?
Can I just be clear on something that the councilwoman is getting me confused on? Nothing is in place with the state as well. So to be at the bottom of the barrel, there's no barrel. So we're putting this on hold and keeping the door open for an unknown reason. So even if the door's open, and granted, something comes into play, but there's not even anything engraved that could come into play today. So this...
There is, at some point in time, given January, there is something, the state is going to have to figure out where that money is going to go.
You used the word "going to have to." They do not have anything in place. So it would be very crazy of us to do, make any sort of move anyways, is the way I look at it. I mean...
No, the only deadline at this point is the January 1st, where the state will start issuing recreational licenses. And if the city does not have a ban against the recreational licenses, the state can, a business in Millbrae can go to the state and request a license from the state for an operation without the city's authorization.
If I'm getting the drift of the councilwoman Pappen, it's we're only keeping this door open because we want to gain perks. Is that correct?
Well, my understanding is, by putting something like this on our books, we maintain our own...
Options.
Future discretion?
Future discretion. Nice way to put it.
Yes, I understand that. At this point, there are no discretions to even be thinking about, because nothing from the state has been asked, or offered, I should say.
Well, I think the point is that they're going to be issuing licenses unless we get something on the books. And that protects us at this point in time. And if we choose to, in the future, provide a limited ordinance somewhat, even that, whoever attempts to do that, there's no guarantee that person will get a license from the state. And there's a whole bunch of diff, we don't know what the options are. The state, I mean, the ordinance from Palm Desert here is, you know, you have to jump through all our hoops, and then you may not even get a license from the state. So there's all kinds of balls in the air. You are correct.
I have a question on page three of the draft ordinance, under the, let's see, item, item D, regarding personal cultivation. And that it requires, a person must first obtain a permit from the city's planning department. It's my understanding, from attending several different discussions about the Prop 64 law, that the city cannot restrict personal cultivation up to six plants. Correct?
Yeah, that's correct. But it does allow the city to reasonably regulate that activity.
So issuing permits, then?
So you can identify where they are, who's, helps with the fire and public safety.
Same thing with outdoor growing? That can be prohibited?
Outdoor growing can be prohibited outright.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we were not in violation of Prop 64 there.
Yeah, so along those lines, we could actually prohibit somebody from growing it in their front yard, as opposed to their backyard, near school, all that stuff.
Correct.
Okay, so we've got work to do.
Councilwoman Schneider?
The same section that the mayor was talking about, page three of the ordinance. If you are a landlord, and do you have the ability to tell your tenants that they cannot grow in your, in the home that they have leased, or the apartment that they've leased?
Yes, we can go back and look. If it's a, generally, if you're not the owner of the residence, you have to obtain permission from the landlord to grow. There's also going to be some, the state regulatory framework is going to address some of the issues with even consumption in multi-unit dwellings. So that's, one of the things we looked at, is trying to look at the state, when the state comes out with their regulations, to make sure that you're mirroring those and looking at those also, but...
And those would come forward in some kind of frequently-asked questions, an FAQ of some kind?
Well, the regulations are, they're working hard to get those out by the end of the year, so once we see those. But there's, the drafts that have come out do include language with regard to consumption and growing in multi-unit dwellings, and as far as...
So should we pass this tonight? Is there plans within the city of Millbrae to make that information, whatever that information is, easily? I can't speak tonight. Find it easily, either from our website or a link from our website to a site on that?
It's our understanding that's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We do have a speaker slip on the topic. Speaker is Win Gersich.
When Millbrae banned their, you know, having the pot thing, I was here that night, and I was so proud of you guys. I thought that was the greatest thing I'd ever heard. Because over at Hayward, you should visit there, that we have all, we have a sanctuary city, we have all these foreigners, that they walk around smoking dope because, and they sell it. And one thing, too, is that when you can grow pot in your backyard, or now you're going to grow it in your house, a lot of these people sell it to the high school kids. And, you know, a child's brain doesn't develop till they're 25 years old. And my sister dated a guy who did numerous research on pot, and it does cause brain damage. They tested these people for over 20 years, and it lowers their IQs and things. So if you have to do a permit for somebody to grow that in their house, you better check up on them. Because also, too, on the East Bay, and I know a lot about this, where my sister lives in a gated community, and these are million-dollar homes, they had a lot of people buying these big houses, and they had high PG&E bills, and the cops found all kinds of pot growing in this gated community because of that. And my girlfriend rented her house out in the Hayward Hills, and they boarded up the house and did all kinds of stuff, and they were growing dope in there, too. So you may end up having people going into business in their homes if you don't have your, you know, find out who's growing these six pot plants, and see if they're growing a whole house full of stuff, you know? Because if you can't plant it outside, they're going to plant it in the house. And there were so much homes over where I live that had been busted for this. And especially if you walk down the street in Hayward, you can get out of the parking lot at the city hall, and they're smoking pot on you, right there in the parking lot. And you walk down the street, and they're puffing, and your kids are walking behind you, and they're getting, you know, dope smoked on them, too. And, you know, it's a moral issue. I mean, there should be a place, if they want a pot-smoking room, do it at your house, or do it in a hospital room, or have some building you can go in and just puff away. But here, we're trying to ban cigarettes, and yet, people are smoking dope all over the place. And, you know, we don't even know if this is genetically modified, too. In the book, Behold a Pale Horse by William Cooper, they said that cigarettes were grown on radon tailings, which makes them radioactive. How do we know what pot's grown in? And plus the fact, if it's genetically modified, with what? Is it stronger than it used to be? Is it, you know, we don't know what's in it? Plus the fact, in Monterey, they're now letting the people who had flower farms, because we now buying flowers from Colombian stuff. Our government subsides of the pot places so that they can grow marijuana. Our government subsides of the pot places so that they can grow marijuana and they're using fracking fluid... If they're putting fracking fluids in the water in Monterey and they're watering our crops and stuff the way the fracking fluids are in Central Valley, you don't know what kind of water is put on those things either or where are you getting it from? So I mean, you have to look at all these issues, but there's a lot of things that you've got to take... Just come over to Hayward and smell the pot when you walk down the street and see if you want that here in Millbrae.
All right. Any comments from the council? Councilman Lee?
Thank you. I just wondered, what is the penalty if somebody is... breaks the ban? Is caught? What is the penalty and do we codify that somewhere?
There's a standard penalty in our municipal code.
And what is that penalty?
It's increasing... It's $100, $200, $500 for each violation.
Seems kind of minimal.
But that's for...
All violations of municipal code.
But we cannot prohibit use in a place that's not prohibited... You know, cigarettes aren't prohibited, correct?
That's my understanding.
Is anywhere that's anyone can smoke a cigarette, they can smoke marijuana under Prop 64?
I believe that's right. So for example, in a person's home, you would not be able to prohibit possession and use?
But even outdoors, as long as it's not within 25 feet of the doorway?
I believe that's right. Again, for a person over 21, personal use.
Okay.
I also have a question for the chief, as you're in the audience. What is the sheriff's department's tactical plan for this? I know we're going to have break-ins. We're going to have a lot of issues that are associated with the use of marijuana, including nuisance complaints. So what is our plan?
I'd like to point out too that the county has already passed an ordinance to allow growing of the substance on the coast. So it's coming... It's in our area.
Yeah, it is in our area. Good evening, by the way. Our plan is we need to figure out... We're working with the district attorney, Steve Wagstaff, to try and find out how we're going to prosecute cases with this marijuana. The legislation seems to be so fluent and we're not quite sure exactly the direction it's going to go. But from a public safety perspective, we do have a lot of questions and concerns and we're studying Colorado as a state to determine... To get some ideas on how it has impacted their state with public safety. And there's a lot of concerns, but our stance in the sheriff's office, the Millbrae Police Bureau and all of the jurisdiction that we have in the county is that we're going to do the best that we can with what we know. But there's going to be concerns about... It's a cash industry because federal law prohibits banks from accepting money that's derived from marijuana sales or cultivation. And that presents problems in and of itself. And there's also been some studies in Colorado that show that there's been an increase of homelessness in places that sell recreational marijuana. And when you have increased homelessness, that can bring problems in and of itself. And something that really concerns me is the concentrated oils out of cannabis or marijuana that's put into candy. And there are stories and they're real-life stories about candies that have cannabis or extract oils in it, they often don't look any different than any sort of candy. And what worries me personally as just somebody who sees this from the outside in, not just as my position here as a bureau chief, but as a person is seeing this type of candy get into kids' hands because it's... And it's so concentrated that we don't know how much it... You know, it doesn't take much. You can eat one cookie and you can go into toxic shock because you've had too much THC in your system. So I'm not speaking factually. I'm just speaking based on some of the research that's been done. It's too early to tell, but there are concerns. I believe the San Mateo County Police Chiefs and Sheriff Association most likely share those concerns. It's just something that we need to get a little bit more research on and we'll do whatever we need to do to make the public safe.
So my other question, thank you for doing that impromptu presentation. For our attorney, is there a way we can increase our penalties?
Yes, we could. But we'd probably want to bring that back, you know, have some time to draft that. But we have some ability to increase our... You know, rather than going with the standard penalties that are under our code, we can look at that.
I mean, if you're selling pot, $100 is not going to defer me from selling pot.
Well, no, it's not. I'm just to be clear, it would be a violation of the city's ordinance. There's still state ordinances, state laws that control other behaviors. It's simply the violation of our ordinance here in terms of opening a dispensary. Adam, I don't know if you've looked at other ordinances with enhanced penalties?
I don't believe I've seen any local ordinances that include enhanced penalties, but as Michael was saying, none of this is exclusive of state law. For example, if you're selling pot outside of the legal regulatory system, then you're still committing a crime in the state of California.
And lastly, thank you very much. Lastly, I really would like to ensure that we... This is a family-oriented city, of course. I would really like to see that we have a buffer created around our restaurants to make sure that children aren't exposed to the smoke or make sure that, you know, we're closely enforcing it in our parks, near our schools, that sort of thing. So I know it's going to cause a lot more logistical issues, but it's something we should start planning for.
Vice Mayor Pappen?
Yeah, I think this is more important than ever. I'd like to request that we do set up some sort of a subcommittee that I would like to be on here. I mean, because it's more than schools. It's like daycare facilities, youth centers. I mean, we need to cover our public safety and, you know, all aspects of this. This is just step one. I get it. But, you know, I think the study of this is very important to protect, as the sheriff's department has pointed out. I work in downtown San Francisco and just walking down the street becomes an issue, especially if you're with a child. So with the mayor, you know, I think this is important.
I think if we were to do that, I think we also should also look at cigarette smoking downtown, perhaps consider some type of smoking restrictions in public places and perhaps also in multi-unit housing structures because that's a pretty large public health risk as well. Councilman Schneider?
I like that idea. A couple of questions. I was talking to a lot of people over the weekend who would like to see some kind of dispensary in Millbrae and I had countered it with how much it might cost to enforce. And the staff member doesn't have a lot of data about enforcement, the cost for enforcement. But I would imagine over time we'll have a better handle on what the costs of enforcement will be. And then my other quest... So that's kind of a comment I would have... It would help me explain to the public why we could be making revenue, but we don't know what it's going to cost us at that point. And then my other question, when I was thinking about the permit, because I did have a house next door that was selling, I'm assuming marijuana because I smelled it, to high school kids. I'd see them come up to the door with their backpack and leave within five minutes or so. And those are the kids at Mills High School because I live on the pathway to Mills. And so if we... If a house is growing their six plants and they get a permit, does that permit become public knowledge? If that becomes public knowledge, doesn't that house then become a burglary target? And therefore, doesn't that also make it dangerous to the neighbors on either side? I would love to see a little more... I'm kind of still... Where am I on this? I would add to the children, my mom has COPD. A little bit of smoke from cannabis can actually put somebody into asthma attack, can send them to the hospital. So it could be anybody with breathing issues as well as children and seniors. But I'd kind of like to know a little bit about the permitting system because it seems to me it almost targets these homes as locations for burglary.
Is there a comment on that? Because I'm actually kind of interested as well.
I think a concern would be more the ones that don't have permits, just in my line of business with real estate.
Well, I mean...
I'd like to share about five horror stories this year where they take everything out of the house and grow everything in the house. So getting a permit is not going to solve this issue. I think the concern should be the cash. Like the chief said, this is a cash business. So if we're going to keep it a cash business and let it in some areas, you're asking for trouble. It's just bottom line. Either you do it or you don't. You make it legal or you don't. And at this point, in front of us, is to have the option to delay anything.
Right. Well, I just want to state for the fact here, we've had pot houses in Millbrae. The fire departments found them when they caught them fire or, as was noted, a competitor broke in. So it's before us and the discussion here tonight, I think, is healthy and appreciate it. So please.
I just thought I'd provide some... I think I may end up just repeating what's already now been said, but this is an existing problem. It's not a new problem. There's the potential for changes and that's exactly what the staff is proposing to study. The ordinance that is before you now is the one that maximizes the city's ability to control those problems and come up with ways to continue to control them in the future and minimizes any new problems that may come up without prior study and development of a policy plan. So that's the purpose of this ordinance is to, to the greatest extent allowable under state law, clamp down on all these new activities until we can figure out how to deal with any negative side effects.
Okay. So with that said, do we have a motion to close? This is to close the public hearing. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Pappin and a second from Councilman Lee. Your votes, please.
The public hearing is closed.
Okay. And clear the board, please. It looks like we have a motion from Vice Mayor Pappin and a second from Councilman Aliva. Your votes, please. This is to waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance.
Unanimous. The motion passes unanimously.
Next on the agenda is item number nine.
Thanks, staff. That was... Thank you, everybody.
Yes, thank you, staff, and thank you, county services. And I think, as was discussed tonight, it's... The assignment isn't completely over yet. I think this will be an ongoing issue and be interesting to see how, you know, how this actually does work when Proposition 64 goes into effect in January. Okay. Next on the agenda is item number nine, confirmation of the 2017-2018 mayor/vice mayor rotation. Do we have a staff report on this item?
Other than the staff report that's in your agenda, we do not.
Is there any discussion on this item?
I have a question.
Yes, Councilman Aliva?
Are we voting on the protocol or are we voting on that we're going to vote on it next time?
No, this is to confirm... Oh, sorry.
You're going to vote on it next time. This is not election. This is simply to accept the report that gives you the vote totals from the election. So you have the information to make the decision next time. It'll be in the December... It's on the December...
That's different, the next time.
Right, I'm sorry. I should clarify. It's at the council meeting in December when the reorganization occurs. So this is somewhat early. It's not your next meeting, but it's the meeting... The reorganization meeting, the first meeting in December.
This is on simply because of...
Right. This is on because the protocols require that this report be given. So that you... Ahead of that date, you have the information as to what the vote totals are. That's all.
Okay. Any additional comment, question?
This is a protocol. So this does not assure any seats are taken. There has to be a vote of the council. And the backlash from the public here on just an informational item and one council member trying to seek recalls, this is way out of control for an informational item that was just put off so that all the council members were present. It does not speak well of the council as a whole. So please, understand, it's a protocol. You're just reporting out the secretary of state's results and the council as a group will have to decide come December how they would like to proceed. So I just found a simple action and the reaction of a council member here very, very disturbing. So I will move to accept the report and we will move forward on this.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Pappin and a second from Councilman Lee. Your votes, please.
Item number nine passes unanimously.
Okay. And that brings us to council comments. It's getting a little late, but let's just do it very briefly. Councilman Lee?
I have no significant comments.
Vice Mayor Pappin?
Yes. The Westin in Millbrae celebrated their 30th anniversary and they have over 200 employees there that commute from all over the place. They have added 18 new rooms. They were purchased. It used to be Starwood, but now it is Marriott. And as we progress, they are a great benefit to our community and our tax base. So we celebrate their anniversary. They had a lovely party there. They're going to have special events coming up, so try to watch. I think they're going to have a big concert coming up there. And they are just a wonderful addition to the city of Millbrae in what they bring to our community. Their staff is wonderful and they'll probably be running special events on the weekends if you are a resident of Millbrae and want to stay away. Is that what they call it? Staycation of some sort? They're pretty busy Monday or Sunday through Thursday. So the other days, you may be able to get some sort of a deal. But it was a great celebration. And also like to thank the Lions Club. They had their crab feed, which was a huge success. And the funds will go to the victims of the fire. And... Over $10,000, I think. Over $10,000. So everyone who helped out there, it was an amazing event. Compliments, as usual. The Lions Club really supports the community, not only here, but in our surrounding area. So very proud, Councilmember Lee, Councilmember Schneider, all members there. You guys can join too if you want. But being there, yes. The mayor was there as well. So I thank you very much.
He's asking us to join.
I was trying to recruit. There you go.
Okay. Councilman Schneider?
I attended the housing leadership day at College of San Mateo last Friday and there were a number of really interesting things. Given our goal-setting today, I am still learning how to bring this forward. But there was a workshop that tried to explain inclusionary affordable housing and standalone affordable housing and the financing involved in that. I took a lot of notes, but I think what might really help Planning Commission and the city understand affordable housing is to have some of these professionals come in and talk about it. There was a very good workshop that dove very deeply into how you can structure the financing for one type of inclusionary housing versus a standalone affordable housing unit. There was another odd comment in there. They had the homeless count for every city in the county, including Millbrae at negative one homeless people, and that didn't seem accurate. So that's not on our goals, but it is after, especially after the incident at the library, something that I'm trying to pay and to learn as much about on that. There were two really interesting things. I am a landlord in Mountain View and I use a program called Project Sentinel. Anytime I do anything, anytime I upgrade my contract, I contact them. And the county has now hired Project Sentinel for all cities in Millbrae. So if you're a landlord and you want to make sure you're doing the right thing, or a tenant and you want to know, Project Sentinel, you can Google it. It's a program I've used for 11 years now down in Mountain View. They also talked about the renters' helpline. And I'm not sure how much of this is on our website, but I was so happy to hear that. One of the speakers at the housing council talked about a Millbrae woman who has had to give up her home. She can't afford it anymore and now has to move into a room in somebody else's house. So I will again, and I know this has come up before us, before hip housing, a way to try to match people with rooms that you may have in your house. And they do a really... They work really hard to match personalities and lifestyles so that we can help... that we can help keep our, our people in their homes and if you've got a room to rent, you can help create an affordable housing stock. Monster March is this Saturday. We, Chief Cam Meyer left, but I was told on Friday that we probably will have a fire engine. It's always questionable if there's something else and they get called out, but he told me that all of our engines are back, our firefighters will be rested. So if you haven't been to a Monster March, the fire truck comes, the kids get to climb into the truck, they get to have their picture taken in the fire truck. It's part of the, the fun of Monster March that Saturday, starting at 10:00. The parade will start at 1:00 o'clock, we should be done by 1:30. The next day is the Rotarian Halloween Carnival. They didn't have to get a permit this year, but I thank the city for announcing it. It's at Rotarian Park and I don't know the exact time. I apologize to the Rotarians. C-KAG, 10 to 1? 10 to 1?
11 to 1.
11 to 1 at Rotarian Park. I want to thank the Historical Society, they put on a really lovely event at the oldest house in Millbrae and it was an opportunity to get to see, I think it's 130 or 40 years old. I, I think a lot of people there felt that the house is going to get purchased and then torn down, which breaks my heart, but I thank the Historical Society for that opportunity and I hope somebody who loves old homes can either take heart and buy the property or buy the house and move it to another location. In Mountain View, they took an old farmhouse and they turned it into an event center. So it's just an idea out there.
Just a question, can we declare it a historical landmark?
We haven't. And, and here's something interesting from, I don't want to cut you off. I learned something in the Airport Noise Roundtable. One of the ways that you can actually help your community by noise is if you have a historical center. So Scottsdale in Arizona was able to fight the new FAA flight patterns because Scottsdale is a historical society. So it's something being discussed within the SFO Roundtable.
We can look at that. I just, I mean...
Finally, or two finallys. C-KAG, I had the pleasure of attending when the mayor and vice mayor couldn't attend. It's a lot of transportation. There is a future EIR, draft EIR being released for managed lanes, which will run from 380 down to Santa Clara County. They have two public meetings, one in San Mateo, one in Redwood City, and I've asked that we get one here in Millbrae, tried to partner with San Bruno or South City, but that our community can understand that we may be adding a managed lane to the freeway at 101 and who knows what that'll do to Rollins Road. And a finally, thank you to South City Scavengers for the crab feed. We recycled all of the food waste, paper towels and everything. I got to tell you, it's incredibly heavy. They brought wheeled carts and it was a pleasure to get to do food scrap this time. So thank you so much for South City Scavengers for making that happen.
Okay. And Councilwoman Oliva?
I'll be quick. Would just shout out to Parks and Recs for that 7:30 a.m. ribbon cutting. Thank you, mayor, for setting that time. It was awesome, awesome job that Parks and Recs did. And, you know, I attended Senior Advisory Committee and I just wanted to let everybody remember that they're still meeting at the Magnolia. And I think that's pretty darn nice of that business to be allowing the seniors to be there and I want to say thank you to them for doing that.
Okay. And I would just like to end it on a note by congratulating our man, woman, and student of the year, Dino De Rinnieri, Debbie Van Wirt, and Pauline Yang. Very well-deserved honors. We had a wonderful dinner on Friday night. So thank you, everyone who was there Friday and congratulations to our award winners. And with that, I will close and we will adjourn to our next regular meeting in November. Good night, everyone.